I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I convene as the Walworth County Planning and Zoning Board. Is there any old business? New business? Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
No second.
Got a second. Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. I'd like to convene as the Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there any old business?
Uh, I do have one thing. Did we ever approve the written findings? I know they was wrote out, but don't we have to?
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that, all the stuff that we need done for the next meeting.
Okay.
So, no one has a good one? Any other old business? New business? Hear none, I'll take a motion.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
No second.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. I'd like to convene as the Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the agenda.
I would like to add Lynda Beaman after the Hints property discussion.
About the what property?
The Hints, after twenty-five.
What's it regarding?
It's regarding landfill questions.
Okay, we got a takeoff. Seventeen Charlie Huffman, he won't be here. He was gonna add for landfill report. Something happened on the computer, didn't get on there, and executive session will be at the end. So, I would take a motion.
Executive session regarding?
Uh, personnel. Okay, I need a motion.
I still move.
I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. Public forum.
Jim Biese?
Jim. Jim Biese. It's regarding, uh, the rate, the rate rates.
Okay, not right now.
What's that?
That's not right now.
Yeah, yeah. I just was told to sign in if you wanted to speak.
Yeah, I'll be on that one, but that's okay. I'll just keep it here.
Somebody else? You ever had a chance to go over the minutes of February fourth, two thousand twenty? If so, I'd take a motion.
I agree.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. Does everybody have a chance to go over the things?
Redwood approval.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
Someone?
Got a second. Need more discussion on? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. Nine oh six, which she won't be here. Monthly treasury report. Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll take my second.
Second. Any more discussion on that?
You guys don't get one, 'cause I got like six copies.
What did I?
That's just what I was thinking of. Stay with me, David. That's why I was looking at it, see if they need anything.
Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. For the eighteen, consider motion to approve abatements for record seven zero three eight, three seven two eight.
Um, yes.
Yeah.
The three, what is it? Three zero seven eight is a property that was taken back by an exempt entity kind of in the middle of the year and spent our practice to forgive those taxes. So, because exempt entities like cities don't pay, and the amount was twenty-three dollars and forty-seven cents.
What number do you have there?
Um, seven zero three eight.
Okay. Yeah, you got them mixed up there.
Did I?
Yeah.
What did I say?
Three zero seven eight.
My pronunciation.
Okay, I'll need a motion for that.
I still move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any other discussion on that? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. Okay, on three seven two eight.
That one is, uh, another person that applied and was eligible for an exemption for a portion of the property. And, um, the amount that will need to be forgiven is one thousand two sixty-seven oh seven.
Okay, I take a motion for that.
I still move.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second. Got a second. Any more discussion on that?
Well, is it just a portion of the property?
They only apply for a certain amount, uh, under that exemption.
Would that apply to the whole property?
It applies to the total value, but they only receive a certain amount of that value. That is, can be exempt. So, it's a part of?
So, it's a percentage of the whole property?
It's, uh, by law, it's, it's a flat number. And so, anything that, that is assessed over that amount is still taxed.
Okay, and this, this was the first year this has happened for that property?
Yes. That number, by the way, just so you know, has changed. It was, um, for last year. It was the first hundred thousand, what was exempt, and for twenty twenty, we would actually raise that and make the first hundred and fifty thousand.
Any other questions? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion passed. Okay, we got auctions at nine thirty, so we gotta move on. We'll go down to twenty-one. Consider, consider motion to approve budget supplement. Notice the public hearing. Notice is given?
That can't be done. You have to wait till ten fifteen on that.
Really? Okay. Josh? He got a poll right now.
Number twenty-four. Kevin Marion, I didn't know if you wanted to speak to that. That's the, that was part of our advisory board meeting. I guess my, my big concern with that deal is, you know, that the, the group, jail committee talked about that, but until we get approval from the rest of the counties, I guess I'd have a hard time supporting that. Because... You just, you just moved to the meeting? I think so, because, uh, you know, if they're, they can discuss it, but I mean, if the rest of the counties, we don't have them committing to it. I mean, we have one commissioner at the meetings, without having the rest of their board agreeing to it, I guess. So, you agree, you can put a statement, I don't think they agree, but then it doesn't approve it. However, whatever you got from there, we can give it to it.
I guess I got two questions on these reports. Uh, one, Justin, did you ever get that split up for the six counties?
I'm working on it, yeah, yes. For that, that you wanted after last meeting for the, please advisory board?
When do they expect that to be done?
I will hopefully get that done by next week for sure. Because you want to run down for the six counties that were, that are meeting, right?
Yeah, we've been asking for a few months to get it split out, so they can see, the six counties can see what they're gonna be getting.
Do you want to split on this or a separate report?
On this.
Okay.
And have them, this report, so they can see what they're getting into.
Okay.
The other question I have is, can you explain why your vehicle has just as many hours as two deputies' vehicles combined?
You're talking about Tahoe?
Yep.
They use that for three or four trips to Yankton. Uh, there was bad weather last month, and they use that to go to Yankton. I think there was like four trips to Yankton with it.
Well, between the Tahoe and the jail Crown Victoria, you got sixty-seven hundred miles on it, and you got four thousand miles between the two deputies.
They use it for Yankton, and they also use it in the Soul Falls. But it's the only technical four-wheel drive vehicle that we have.
The pickup isn't four-wheel good?
We don't have that anymore.
No, into emergency management.
The explorer's one.
Four-wheel good?
It's all.
It's all-wheel drive, but, yes. Um, but we've used that for icy roads and why not to Tahoe? It's gonna give us time for transport because of that, the road conditions. And we've also used it during storms.
And you're driving every day back and forth to work here?
Yes.
I thought we weren't gonna be doing that anymore. Unless we need to, I guess.
Yeah, I haven't shut the door yet.
Anything else?
Uh, just a little heads up for the jail advisory board, which twenty-four is coming into that. We met with the other six counties again. We thought we had a plan in place that was gonna work good. It was billed ten ninety-nine when it got passed. But that didn't make it out of the house, so now we're back to square one on how we're gonna pay for this. Ten ninety-nine was supposed to give us the option to impose a sales tax, asset sales tax, which we could have split out in six counties. They could have had this thing paid for in seven years. Now where are we gonna come up with seven million dollars to pay for this? Now we're back to square one again. We're open for ideas on how we're gonna pay for this thing. Their idea right now is to each put in thirty thousand. That's a far cry from, if you split seven million in half even, a far cry from making payments. At thirty thousand. Now all of a sudden, they wanna see schematic drawings of these projects, EAPC. They want another seventy-five hundred dollars to have a schematic design. Your guy out there, is he gonna provide one, or what's that gonna cost us?
He didn't say it cost him anything.
Okay, and that one's cheaper anyway.
I just talked to him yesterday on the phone. They said, you will have it done by your next break. He said they're doing one in Valley City, they're gonna close those, basically, off of that jail.
I guess my opinion is, why should we spend another seventy-five hundred dollars? We spent over sixty thousand already on these, damn these options. So, we're nowhere close to even getting on the up.
EAPC won't draw nothing up without about seventy-five hundred?
That's what, that's what I share with you.
What's your guys' opinion? I don't think we should do it.
Well, I, like I said before, I, I have a hard time agreeing to the seventy-five hundred dollars without the rest of the counties having a written agreement saying they're going to split the cost if they're gonna do it. Um, and if we can get drawings from another company that don't cost us anything. But here's, here's my other issue with that. That is, that is the architect and the engineering firm of record from the get-go on this project. Are we just gonna toss him aside? That's what the board needs to decide. If I'm, I will quit communication with Lee at this point. And if you guys, I don't know, you know, Klein-McCarthy, they were part of the process, but they were not chosen by the board at the time. So, I guess I'll leave that up to the board. I, I'm not gonna be a decision maker in that. I guess if, I'll quit communications with them if that's what the board wants. But I'm spinning my wheels with that, and I thought that's, you know, that through the legal process and how we did it, I just thought we were dealing with EAPC, with Klein-McCarthy as secondary. But, I mean, I can't control, you know, whether they're gonna charge me or not. I mean, that's, it's my, in my opinion, that's how I took that email that it was about seventy-five hundred dollars to get a schematic design, um, the other. That, that takes time now for...
If we can get another company to bid it for a million dollars less, wouldn't it make sense to take a look at them?
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, of course, Kevin, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you.
Okay, so...
But we need to then, we need to start the whole process all over, go through all the bidding. We need to go, we need to search for contractors and engineering firms and...
That's what we're doing now, isn't it?
Well, I thought we already had this in place.
If we can get another bid and design from another company for a million dollars less, I guess I would rather take a look at that and save a million dollars.
I'm not saying that we can't do that.
Unless you can come up with seven million dollars somewhere, I don't know.
I'm not saying that we can't, we can't do that. I'm talking, what I'm speaking of is the process that we've already taken.
Okay.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm speaking to.
I realize that.
I just wanna, I just wanna do things right.
But I'm also taking a look at the other six counties. The big thing that they was pushing is thirty thousand apiece.
Nope, I, and I understand that.
It's a hundred and eighty thousand.
Nope, and I understand that. I'm part of those meetings, as you're well aware.
What, what is, uh, what did we come up with principal and interest payment per year?
Your interest rate? I think you said anywhere between five and six percent.
Yep.
And what did I share with you in an email from, from Doherty and Associates, two point one nine?
That's for them to build.
No, that's, they have, that's not the builder. That's financial. Doherty and Associates deals with the financial portion of it only.
Um, it's a bond issue.
Correct. Correct. That's a bond issue. So, but that's why I shared that percentage rate with you, you guys. Um, but I just, I wanna do this correctly, you guys. I'm not, this isn't an argument.
I understand.
We've done this, we've gone this far and got an advisory board, and we've got six counties that are interested. Um, I'm just...
And even with that bond issue, the principal and interest payment was what, four hundred and thirty-four thousand a year? Did I hear the principal of my...
I believe so, yeah. Um, but, anyway.
I can look it up. So, if, if we get a hundred and eighty thousand...
Mr. Chairman is, is the process that we've already taken. I just wanna make sure we're doing it right.
Well, I, I...
And following stuff correctly. I'm not saying we can't. You was Klein-McCarthy, I'm not saying that at all. Um, I'm glad that, I mean, someone reached out and was able to give another, you know, another number. But then we need to try and get them involved with the process. And, I mean, are we gonna consider EAPC since they were originally part of the project? Because the project never really died. It's always been slowly making tracks, so very slowly.
I, I guess what I'm gonna ask is, did you ask him about just doing this and giving us this? We've gotten enough money already. I noticed another little version of the jail. I, I guess, I think I would throw it out there and tell him, well, we, we already got another company that's gonna give us their prices and not charge us anything. He made no bones about it. He wasn't gonna charge for this. He said, if you take it, if you take us on it, that's fine. If not, we'll walk away and be friends, he said. I guess I would, I would go back to EAPC and, and say, I think you've got enough money. I think you could, you should be able to figure this out. I guess that's how I would go that. And if not, I would think that the rest of the county, I know it's gonna be a jail in Walworth County, but I think that, you know, the county should be involved in that.
No, I can't repeat it, I just...
But I, I think I would go back to, to EAPC and I would throw that right out. And I'd say, you want us to even consider you, give us something. I, I don't think them guys in Minnesota would have had to do it. But they, I guess they, they're gonna try to get it.
I can...
So, what do you guys think? Jim, what do you think?
Well, yeah, I understand. We hired EAPC to do this. I don't know, and I'm not on the advisory board, but we've had quite a few designs drawn up already. They've drawn up, what, two or three, I think. Original one and a smaller version. Well, I really don't know at this point why we needed another schematic design. We can have a hundred and fifty designs, we ain't building a place.
Well, it's obvious we ain't building it, or even gonna attempt to build a ten million dollar jail.
The design they give us wasn't a ten million dollar jail. It was a courthouse, parking, tearing the old jail down. That would have, you got a whole lot more than just a jail for ten million.
I can answer that question, and I guess if he chooses to back away, he'll tell me. But I can certainly ask that.
I think it should be asked. I mean, if they want to try to do something, I would think, I would allow you to agree to it.
Okay, that's what I'll do.
Anybody got any ideas of where we're gonna come up with seven million dollars? Are we gonna force the other counties to pay for at least half of it? I would think between the six counties, my feeling, they should be paying for at least half of this. The thirty thousand, that's a hundred and eighty thousand. The bond issue that Josh has got, payments are four hundred and thirty-three, eight thousand, five hundred, forty-six, four hundred and sixty thousand. That's a little bit short of a hundred and eighty thousand. So, if they're not gonna step up to the plate and pay for half of it, that's my feeling anyway. If we're using half of it, we'll pay for half of it. But the other ones better step up too. What's your guys' opinion? We need to know what your guys' opinion are when we go back to the advisory board.
Well, I believe they should pay that.
Jim?
Josh had proven to us he could bring in enough money to make that payment out of county income through the US Marshals and VIA.
What about the one point two? That doesn't even include the one point two million.
Right, we're gonna have that whether we have any out of county or not.
Not if we close up.
About what?
Not if we would close up.
We can't afford to close up. I'll guarantee that. We've already went down that road and discussed it a lot. We cannot afford to close our jail.
Well, I agree. We've got an advisory board, let's keep it there. It's, we're still in planning stages, so if anybody's got any ideas, please bring them forward, come and talk to me anytime. My door is always open. This isn't cut and dried. It was, those numbers that I got, it was, I think they're necessary numbers to have in front of us. That's why I got and shared with you. I mean, it's not, I'm not saying that's what we need to do. I'm not force feeding nothing. That's not what it is. It was information only. So, go back, you know, the drawing board is still there. It's a, it's a bit dry erase board, they've changed it multiple times, so... I guess, I guess I would suggest that too, if we can, let's go back to EAPC and just see if they would do this.
I can.
Without that. And then if we're gonna get another plan from the guy in Minnesota, we at least have that.
Klein-McCarthy.
Those options to look at. As far as the method of paying for this, unfortunately, I feel like we, we kinda got the short end of the stick on the House Bill ten ninety-nine, because I think that was an option that was gonna work quite well for the six counties. And I did revisit, with Representative Gosh reference that. I think that's gonna be coming back in another forum, not this session, but it's a year out. So it's gonna come back again with some language and some amendments to it. It's too late to do it this year, otherwise they'd have done it. But it is not, it's not a dead issue. So the way it sounds, Representative Gosh is, is in favor. He actually voted for it on the House floor. And wants to work with Representative York and the county commission for that broad that gave a lot of kind of... So with those three working on it, I think something positive will come back next year.
Kevin, you're gonna have to explain what, what you said they came up with, thirty thousand. That's what they wanna pay?
We, we gave them different options that we came up with, and they said, "Oh, how's this gonna be fair to, say Campbell County that uses ten days a year to Corson County that uses five hundred and fifty days a year?" So you guys tell us how anything's gonna be fair, or you guys come up with something nobody can come up with. So Keith from over in Corson came up with, "Well, if we all put in thirty thousand and we got this many days," said, "Well, it's still far cry from making a payment. It's not even close to half of the payment. So where's that fair to us?"
And I think that was the other thing that would be, was discussed, was the fact that everything we pretty much talked about, the thirty thousand, is the payment of the building that has nothing to do with the operation cost. We still have the one point two, and if we go bigger or stuff like that, we're probably gonna be increasing that operation cost.
They want at least a forty-eight to fifty-four bed facility.
Advisory board does?
Yep.
Well, I can tell you right now that when we get that plan back from Minnesota, that's not gonna be the size. We discussed that yesterday, and six million dollars, he would've built the jail. Only the jail. No office space, nothing like that. So I went ahead and told him, "Then you shrink that jail. They need to have offices in there." I said, "Didn't you shrink it? At forty-eight, then you go down to thirty-two." I said, "Because they need office space." That, when we get that from you guys in Minnesota, is ninety-eight then? Well, I guess, hopefully I get mine.
Marion and I had some ideas, and we put it out there for different ideas, and we had, I think our plan, we had it pretty well set up, where we would pay for half of it. They said, "It's not fair." Well, if it's not fair, come up with some way that can make it fair. We haven't heard anything back yet.
It's about an impossible task to come up with a so-called fair process when one county has one inmate or ten days served a year, and one county has five hundred days served a year. And they look at their tax basis and stuff like that, it really, there's just no way of coming up with a fair scenario. What I made a comment at the meeting was that I don't know if there is such thing as a fair deal. It's a matter of how much everybody is needing or feels like they need a jail and how much the counties are willing to put into it. We know what we have, we know what it costs us. To operate this jail is the most expensive part of it. And if we can, if we can get this operation and we can get everything into a bundle where it doesn't cost us, the Walworth County anymore, to operate a jail versus shipping them someplace else, that's, to me, that's a win-win. But if we can't get that and we're blowing dollars out the top end with the operation and on top of that a new jail, it doesn't, it doesn't work.
Well, I guess then, I look at it, then Campbell County should maybe look at it somewhere else, because they're doing it, they want it for their convenience.
Our last proposal that we threw out there was thirty-five thousand per county for five of the counties. Corson County was at sixty thousand. The other five counties got two hundred and, two hundred days a year. Corson County had five hundred days a year. They didn't, they didn't think that was fair. So, "Well, then you come up with an idea." At least that got us to about half of the payment.
I don't know that Corson is totally opposed to it, because they know they've got the bigger problem. I mean, they got, they got more and more inmates, but, and there's other counties that they understand too, that they have a need for jail, and it's just a matter of where they're gonna take their inmates versus, you know, closer is better is what they're looking at. I don't know that, I don't know that we've come to an agreement as far as the perfect proposal.
Everybody was in agreement of doing the House Bill ten ninety-nine. They thought that was the best scenario possible. Nobody would've argued about it. But now that that's dead, we're back to square one. You tell these farmers out here that been sucking for the last two years that they're gonna pay for a new jail, you're gonna have issues. So we're open for suggestions. If anybody's out there that's a genius, you come let me know.
Can I say something? Here's an idea. They're in jail for a reason, because they did something wrong. They don't need to live high and mighty. They're in jail for a reason. They don't need a luxury hotel.
They have border rights.
Damn right. They should sit in there and suffer, and then when they get out of there, they should examine their head and get their crap straight, instead of all of us working to pay for them to sit in a luxury hotel. It's a bunch of crap.
Is there anything more on that, Josh?
No. All right, then we're gonna, are you all done? I'll see if I have something else for him. But I'll bring him back. I'll talk to EAPC. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to nineteen, County Own Land Auction.
Notice of leasing for real estate belonging to the county. Notice is hereby given that the real estate belonging to Walworth County cannot require for immediate public use shall be offered for lease in public auction beginning on Thursday, February twentieth, two thousand twenty at nine thirty, in which this chamber located in Walworth County, Department of Commerce, forty-three oh four Fourth Avenue, South Dakota. Shall continue from day to day until all tracts of land for lease shall have been offered. County offer may be for good cause during the auction for a period of not more than three days. Each tract shall be leased to the highest bidder, provided any form of lease here shall have prior right to lease to the highest bidder in case the land offered is under the fence or enclosed. No bid should be accepted which is less than such minimum. Bidding shall progress in increments of fifty dollars. The order which the properties will be offered for lease will be in the same order as published in legal notes. The tracts being offered and a minimum rental rate are listed below. Guess the first one is gonna be real estate, so leased is described as containing eighty acres more or less, situated and being in the west half of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter, Section eight, Township one hundred and twenty-four, Range seventy-six, Walworth County, South Dakota. Minimum bid is six hundred dollars.
Just a three-year lease?
Three-year. All right. Minimum bid is six hundred dollars. Pardon me?
I'll offer minimum bid, six hundred dollars.
Okay, you got a six fifty?
Six fifty.
You got a seven hundred? Six fifty-one watts? Twice? Real estate sole leased is described as containing one hundred and eleven point three acres more or less, situated and being in the southeast quarter of Section five, in Township one hundred and twenty-four, Range seventy-six, Walworth County, South Dakota. Minimum is one thousand one hundred and fifty.
I'll offer minimum bid.
Okay, you got a thousand, eleven hundred and fifty, twelve hundred?
Twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. Twelve fifty? You're twelve fifty. Thirteen?
Yep.
Thirteen fifty? Fourteen? Fourteen fifty? Fifteen hundred?
Two thousand.
Two thousand fifty? Twenty-one hundred?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five fifty? Twenty-six? Twenty-six fifty? Twenty-seven? Twenty-seven fifty? Twenty-eight? Twenty-eight fifty? Twenty-nine?
Three thousand.
Three thousand fifty? Thirty-one? Thirty-one fifty? Thirty-two? Thirty-two fifty? Thirty-one fifty, one once? Thirty-two? One once? One twice? Real estate is sole leased is described as containing thirty-seven acres more or less, situated and being in the southeast quarter of Section five, Township one hundred and twenty-four, Range is seventy-six, Walworth County, South Dakota. Minimum, minimum rental rate is three hundred and ten.
Four hundred and ten rate?
I got three hundred and ten. I got three sixty? All right. Four-ten? Four-sixty?
Yep.
Five? Five-sixty? Four-ten, one once? Five? One once? One twice? Real estate is sole leased is described as containing thirty acres more or less, situated and being in the tract of the northeast quarter of Section thirty-six, in Township one hundred and twenty-four, Range is seventy-nine west. Fifth PM, Walworth County, South Dakota, and also containing nine point five acres more or less, situated and being in the west, three hundred and eighteen feet, the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section thirty-six, Township one hundred and twenty-four, north, Range is seventy-nine west, fifth PM, Walworth County, South Dakota, and also containing seven point five acres more or less, situated and being northwest of the old Ingress. Northeast of the old Egress and Egress landfill, road, north half of the southeast quarter of Section thirty-six, Township one hundred and twenty-four, north, Range is seventy-nine west, fifth PM, Walworth County, South Dakota. Minimum rental is two hundred dollars.
I got a question on that. I've been talking to Deb on that, and we can't come up with an exact lines around there. What's what to come up with your total acreage? Which are you gonna go with? What's here or what she came up with?
Well, I would guess we're gonna come up with what it has always been. Deb, Matt?
Hi. We can't make that lease description work, and I have deeds dating back forever, and I'm not even sure exactly where it's at. I'll need somebody who's way more experienced in like a title search than I am. But we had, two commissioners went out and came back with a map where they had drawn this land. Do you know what this, what we're talking about? We're talking about down by the landfill between Highway eighteen oh four and the landfill building. So we drew out where that, this yellow line on here shows where they depicted to us that the fence was. We believe that's what's being used. And with this rough drawing, we came up with just a little over thirty-three acres. So I, I had suggested to a couple of commissioners that if we're gonna do like a really accurate legal description, we probably should have surveyed that that we want to lease. Because this is just, you know, someone saying this is about where the fence is located. And Victor, Victor has talked to about quite a bit, and this is the drawing of roughly where that fence is at.
What I might say, I said I'm pretty sure this has been done the exact same way for...
It has, for a long time. But when you try to draw...
So you're showing thirty, thirty, how many acres on that?
Just a little over thirty-three, thirty-three point thirty-eight.
We're showing forty-seven here.
Right.
It's a big difference.
So, I think, I mean, then you guys have to, if they wanna, if you want to lease forty-seven, then you probably need to show them where the fence has to be to, so that they get the full forty-seven.
Whose fence is that, that's on there now?
We believe it's a fence that was put up by the previous last deed, but we're not sure of that either. The old, um, road that they're talking about goes in. Now you, you get into the landfill up here, up here at this point. You used to come in down here, you used to be able to go all the way, you know, through. This is, um, this place is, and place down south of that is Robux. The place over here is John Keller's, over here. This is John Keller's. And now this is Robux, this is the old road, and this is where we were told that this place can be.
But I guess right in this bid, we are saying more or less.
Right.
So, I guess if it's forty-seven acres, it's forty-seven acres, if it's thirty acres, it's thirty acres.
Yeah.
I guess right in this, we were, we're stating that, that it's not, we don't know exactly what it is, so I guess I don't see what the, the big deal is.
Other side on the outside of where this fence is? It should be, you know, that means whole.
It has to be, you know, it specifically states in that legal description that it is north of that old Egress road, or Ingress road where...
So that'd be, that's here. So it'd be, it'd be everything, sort of, such and here.
There's also up at the north end of that, there's also like a box culvert, I believe, where cattle can go from there to the west.
Goes over your property, doesn't it, John?
At least eleven, several years, and the vents that are there were there when I had the lease. The only other change, I did fence out the dam, that's in that property near the landfill. Was taking water from that to cover their, their files, but I don't know if it's still around. The fence has been up and down, and it's been there for years.
Is that your fence, John?
It's the north and the west.
He said the fence was there when he started.
I've made changes, I haven't changed it. Even on the landfill side, it's long, a tree road, it's, uh, it's been.
So I think just we could know that, that the legal description that we're seeing gets loosely described as, and it's approximately this many acres, because their bid is not per acre, it's per parcel. So if you, if they know that that, where that, where it's fenced is what they're renting, you know what I'm saying?
Why shouldn't it be south of that fence down to that Egress road where it says in here?
I don't know, Kevin, I, I don't, I'm just telling you where the fence is.
That's the description, it should be all the way down to this road.
Well, if you can come and draw that description on that acre down map, come and help us, because we can't.
By, by what the description is, it says this road to the south.
Some of that might be, there's a tree road in the southeast corner of that property that's fenced out, in Versailles, Robux property. That's completely fenced out there. Otherwise, here's a whole triangle actually of that property is, I would probably think that forty-six acres there.
I would deem that in nineteen ninety-two, the county deeded two Milton and Gene Robux from that east where you see it there, it's just south of that Ingress road, the county deeded them the south, so the landfill owned the north half of the southeast quarter, the north half and the south half. So, in that very corner of the north half, west of that Ingress road, the county deeded sixty feet north and south by, um, six hundred feet east and west to Robux. So somewhere south of that road, Robux owned. But again, we're, we're talking so many deeds, and, and I am not an expert on following a title search, so...
You're, you're talking south of the road though, right?
South of the, the, the old Ingress.
None of, none of this would pertain to that, would it?
It shouldn't. But I'm not measured how far it is from that very corner to that road either. It shouldn't include the road, but...
I mean, what, what's fenced out is what you're renting, right?
Right, that's what I think too.
I see no reason why we just don't...
Say that.
And we're, we're saying this more or less, I don't know why we just don't...
Well, if, if, if you're gonna sit, if it's gonna be what's fenced in, then just say that, but you're not even close to your forty-nine acres, because you got all this other stuff.
Why don't you just say, leave the legal description the way it is, let's start out saying that portion of this legal description that is already fenced is what you're leasing. No matter how many acres it is, that's what you're leasing.
I'll offer minimum bid on where this fence is getting out, as is.
Yes, David.
If we wouldn't, the leasing is, we change, if we don't change what you're saying, the description is, it wouldn't maybe something like Jamie should be there.
To me, it's already wrote in here when it says more or less, I mean, to me, it says it right in there, but I don't know why you'd have to change this at all.
It doesn't give you any borders.
Well, it, there's fence there.
Not necessarily. Not when you go up and look at it, where's the border at?
Johnny Keller's had cattle in there for years.
Yeah, but it, that fence does not go all the way down to that bottom road.
It does, when it goes up around the dam, it's going in on the bottom side.
And then you got that road farther to the south, that in this description, that's where the, where the actual lease goes to, is that access road.
Fence doesn't go to that road.
I know, but the description says it does.
Well, I would say it's a...
Are you gonna go off the fence, or are you gonna go off the description?
Well, it's always been whatever the, whatever's fenced in is what you're gonna get. I mean, I don't think that the county's gonna take and go out there and move this fence.
Well, that's not what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Because if I, if, if I get it, that it isn't, isn't fenced in, I'm gonna hay it, because I'm not gonna pay for acreages that I'm not gonna use.
I think just state it.
Who's gonna get to...
That area.
Go down there, get this description figured out on the map.
You'll have to hire a surveyor. That's gonna cost a whole lot more, two hundred dollars.
I'm gonna say, if you don't do that, then it'd be just as easy to just say, if it's fenced in, is what you're getting.
It'll cost you about fourteen or fifteen hundred dollars to have a survey.
So probably in six years, you get your money back. So has, has anybody ever ran cattle or hayed this bottom end of anything in there?
I'd say you've probably been the longest one there, haven't you, John?
I think I've had it since I moved in there twenty-three years ago, right? We've never gone, gone to the road, to the dam, certain times a year, you get me, it's not filled with water, that's off the top side of the dam, so we can save the water from the landfill, yes, but without a fence, so we've never been there.
I believe that one time it was hay, many years ago. It was just hay, not grain. But I have no idea what a model it was hay. All, all I know is that this is what the legal description has been, and that map you have there is where, roughly where the fence is located. Attach that to the lease, you know what I'm saying? Just say where the area fenced in is designated, and attach, if they're saying...
Back to Becky, you're right, I mean, if we're gonna put something else in there, we gotta, we gotta polish it for whatever it is, ten days or, how can we change it? Jamie's not here, but... Do you know where Jamie left it?
Yeah.
Conference call, I heard Brandon tell him about it.
I would suggest we rent the thirty acres, and if, if we can get the two hundred dollar bid on the thirty acres, we put it into Wildlife Refuge, we'll forget it.
And I think you already got him in a bid on the fenced-in area.
And I'll go, I'll go two fifty on the fenced-in area.
All right, I got two fifty, are it three hundred? Got three hundred, three fifty. Four? Four fifty? Five? Five fifty? Six? Six fifty? Seven? Seven fifty? Eight? Eight fifty? I did eight hundred, one once? Twice? Done. This was supposed to be down here.
This was low-wish as well.
Real estate sold leased is described as containing seventy-three point two acres more or less situated and being in the east half of the northeast quarter, Section eight, Township one hundred and twenty-four, Range seventy-six, Walworth County, South Dakota. Minimum bid is eighteen fifty.
I have a question for, the land that used to be the ground, the dump grounds out there, is that included in the lease?
I was thinking at one time, somebody said no, but I don't, but, uh...
I'm quite sure the county owns the property.
What's that?
Quite sure the county owns that property.
I don't think it does. Deb, you got any down there that would say something like that?
No, I think we should notice that, what's out with the line, the big one, um, because I'll draw it out, draw it out. I'll do right now.
There's an abandoned corn plant sitting on that property, been there for about eight or ten years, police have gone to Carl Walter. Nobody's ever removed it off the property. I don't know if some guy can reclaim the farm it someday or not.
You're talking about that lower area?
Huh?
You're talking about, in that lower area where the...
Yeah, where the dump grounds used to be.
Reason why, but I don't think it is, because we talked about, I don't think I talked about it, and I said that's what we should do, is shave that hill there, fill that in.
Yep.
Down pretty scary.
Those are now. That would be good employee training, those are.
How much would that landfill area be?
Is it, is it five acres? Not even, I don't think.
No, not even that, probably just three acres possibly.
So based on the seven, three acres, it could be included or it could not be included. Because of something to get done, or the way you can farm it.
Huh?
I said, or you couldn't farm it the way it is.
I can spray it off if you pull the wood on it.
There's gotta be dirt added in, because I walked out there when they were doing that road there, there's, there's stuff sticking up, maybe you'd have a lot sticking up if you farmed it.
I can spray the weeds off if you pull the wood on it. But somebody should get machinery off of the set under, on county property, I don't think, right, the motor family need to abandon piece of machinery set for river, either they should be notified to remove it, or the county can dispose it however they see fit.
Been there that many years, obviously don't use it, so...
Doesn't a law state if it's hit there for seven years, it automatically becomes property of yours? Isn't that illegal? So it's probably your property, scrapped on any... Maybe use these old things anymore.
Would it make a difference if the landfill is in this or out of it, on your, if you was to get it?
Well, it depends if the county's ever gonna reclaim it or not.
I know there's something in there about if there's gravel, if there, could be gravel underneath that the county can, can mine that, I know that's in there.
They're not gonna mine the eighteen fifty dump ground, you'd be pretty busy digging trash out for a long time.
I meant anywhere on that.
Yeah.
I didn't mean right there. But is that piece gonna make a difference about the city net?
Well, if a guy tries to farm it, another ten or twenty feet further in, you get trouble from the farmer, you don't rent it. That's why I want to know if it's on, if it's on the tractor. That's why I want to know if it's on the tractor or not. Maybe somebody should control the wormwood on it. I fought it for thirty years in the CRP.
The county owns that entire quarter. And here is the map. So the county owns the entire quarter. And we're leasing what, about seventy-three? So I don't know if this is the own. So I would say we're not. Do you want us to go conference about it? Any sufficient validation? Is it being regulated or something?
What's that?
I would say they got it out of there. I didn't think that there was a doubt. Alright. Alright, then we'll start bidding off at eighteen fifty.
Well, I'm gonna read eighteen fifty.
You got eighteen fifty. You got nineteen?
Yes.
You got nineteen fifty?
Yep.
Two thousand?
Yes.
Two thousand fifty?
Yep.
Twenty-one? Twenty-one fifty?
Yep.
Twenty-two?
Yes.
Twenty-two fifty?
Yep.
Twenty-three?
Yep.
Twenty-three fifty?
Yep.
Twenty-four?
Yes.
Twenty-four fifty?
Yep.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
Twenty-five fifty?
Yep.
Twenty-six?
Yep.
Twenty-six fifty?
Yep.
Twenty-seven?
Yep.
Twenty-seven fifty? Twenty-seven? Going once. Going twice. You want to put that bid right away? You're the only one who's got it?
Oh, I haven't got any.
Okay. This for nineteen sixty-five Oshkosh, snow blower, auto M four seventeen, hundred eight seventeen CR. The bid is for twenty-six eighty-two twenty-five.
For the record, Daring was instructed to check the mail. Uh, at nine forty-five. Uh, she was instructed that if any came in, bring it up. So having not been contacted at any other bid, I recommend you accept it.
You recommend what?
Accept it.
I told you. Hey, I got a motion on the floor to accept it. I need a second. A second. Any more discussion? Here, none? All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Full of sign language. Are you gonna go that about the road right now?
We could. I don't know how many people are in attendance. We could do that right away.
If everybody, if you are wanting to talk about the road or you signed up, you'll have five minutes to talk. There are gonna be one on the phone here, and one in Montana.
Yeah, for the record, I'm providing two paper copies. For an opinion. Uh, will you read that or will I read that?
Doesn't matter. Is Matthew there? Okay, we're just going into it right now. You can call back if he wants to be on the phone. Alright, yep. You got it, yep.
Commissioners, I am writing to voice our objection to the raising of the road north of our house in front of Wes Motors' house and yard. I believe a project of this magnitude should have a highway engineer, civil engineer's opinion on the right way to do this. Is raising the road and adding a culvert in front of Wes's the best option? Should the culvert go out, go at the east end of Wes's yard instead? Which is most cost effective? Which has the least negative impact? Should the road be raised at all? How long will this work? What are the chances it will flood again? How will this added traffic affect the road south of Wes's by our driveway? This road is probably going to flood over in spring. Added trucks and farm equipment could easily make this road impassable due to wear and tear. This is Wes and our only way to the highway. Everyone else has the option to of using the county line. Raising the road in front of Wes's is not a necessity. I have consulted a lawyer and will challenge this roadwork unless more research is done. Thank you. Saragizzi, Zingizzi, and Willham Gizi.
That other one should be read too, because that's from them also.
Commissioners, one or two added points, questions. It was, I was told there has been some unofficial talk about creating a ditch that will provide overflow drainage from Blue Blanket Lake. Are there any studies being done for that project? And has the Corps of Engineers been consulted for their approval? If this were true, objections to adding an east culvert would be muted. Also, what exactly is the natural flow of water in this area? Is it to the best, to the east, excuse me? If so, the county would be required to repair anything that blocks that flow. Sicker Road, put in many years ago, was the problem stopping the water flow. It's up to the county to fix this, even if it is an old established road, Saragizzi.
Right, the first one I got on there is Zane.
Yeah, I just, my mom hit the points on the head there. I just wanted to say, if you did build that road up, how long is it gonna actually last? And it will flood in the spring and it'll cause more traffic southeast of there, southwest of there too. And it's gonna tear up the road even more. So, that's... And I was curious, you had any other people look into it about building it? If it's gonna change the water flow or anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm no road expert, but when Bose Construction built Highway eighty-three by my place, I know those guys quite well, and they have machinery at it, and they discussed what's right and what's not. Now, prior to this, Wes told me that there used to be a culvert there. I don't remember this. But according to Bose, it's always a big no-no to ever restrict water flow. And so I think that would help cure the situation of letting the water go. You know, I don't think we're gonna affect any more land. But I think a culvert should, is a good idea. I think it's about as cost effective as trying to raise that grade. What, Gary, four feet, five feet up, how high you raise it? I know Gary likes to just raise the grade, but I think restricting water flow is, you know, kind of a no-no for the road.
We're talking six inches?
Off the base of the ice, or base of the water, correct?
Six inches above the ice elevation that exists today.
So then you're looking at at least three feet, correct? How deep is that water there?
There's a copy. Uh, I didn't... The proposed grade raise, uh, there's copies there for the public.
So what's the negative of putting a culvert in?
Maybe you should just explain it a little bit.
There's been, I wanna say about two months of dialogue in my right leg, Wes. Has it been two months since we first talked about this?
Well, at least, yeah.
So, uh, I've gone all the way around the world on it. Trying to maintain individual rights, uh, and not stepping on those. I've been of the opinion that it's not in what worth county interest to ever drain a wetland. Uh, that's been kinda directed to me on the regulatory side, that, uh, don't drain any wetlands. Uh, in this case, I felt that I have done everything I can do with regard to my ability on this thing. And now it's at a stage where the public has the right to come in, address the situation. Uh, right now, it's a proposed grade raise. And I'm gonna be informing the commission right now. I don't expect any action on this. Uh, there are threats of litigation. Uh, when the threat of litigation comes in, uh, my position is that head off the litigation with communication prior to going to court. So that's the purpose of this informational meeting. I vouch the NRC as representative to be here. Uh, if there was some magical person that would say, Gary, put a pipe across the Blue Blanket Road, uh, you won't get sued for it, that would be the best case scenario. But anytime, in my opinion, we're taking a water body and putting it somewhere by an accountical means, off-site, across other property, uh, I'm concerned about it. So I wanna apologize, I wanna thank you, Wes, for a public apology that you've been great to work with. You've told me when you felt you were going over my head, but I'm endorsing that. Because this is a public thing, that I don't wanna see litigation coming out of it, so...
Well, I don't think you're gonna see litigation from me, but I'd like to voice my opinion.
Okay, I'll go right back down the line here. Go to Ronnie, go by your name down there a little bit, Wes.
Well, we're here the same way, me and them both. We just wanted to hear what they had to say. We were just told to put our name on the list in case we do wanna talk.
Is there any possible way to contact the landlords and just see if they would allow some water to go by them or something there? Or just to kind of maintain the level of, you know, now what happens if you get another ten-inch rain or something like that? I mean, the last two years there isn't normal with the weather.
Well, just till the snow melts this year. I mean, we're screwed. These old lines are screwed, yes, it is.
What if there's any way to kind of make it so it would just only get so higher? If there's any kind of a way to, you know?
It's just backing up into everybody's places. I mean, nobody, we, none of us, we don't, you guys, you guys are worse than us. You guys got it in your houses.
We're mainly here with the idea that if you, as opposed to raising the road, basically you're raising a dam grade is what it amounts to, allowing more water to be held on his side. The concern is letting it go in Blue Blanket. Well, in the big scheme of things, that amount of water isn't gonna change Blue Blanket a lot. But it all kinda ties together. If we're coming, I guess, with the idea in mind of, is there any possible way to... There's a two and a half mile stretch right now from the power line road to the Glennon Road to be able to get Blue Blanket a way to overflow. And the amount of land that's going under and is gonna continue to go under as Blue Blanket is now out of its banks in several areas, it's only gonna get worse. More roads are gonna go under and more problems are gonna arise. If there's a way to connect point A and B to get that water to be able to go west, there's three options that we've been told. It can either go to Mosthead Creek, that path, or it'll end up getting into Glennon, into the town of Glennon, or it's gonna have to flood back through over the Brockless Slough and go through Thorstensons and around up back to Sand Lake and then up to Pecasi, that route that hid water before. That path would create a lot of damage, plus across the US highway. So that's where our concern is. And I guess, I've talked with Spencer, you know, and raised the question through, on that level, on the impere. He's talked with the VNR. But that's a slow, slow process. So Gary and I have talked, and, you know, I think getting a way to get this water to be able to move, we, it hasn't, it's never overflowed. There's rumor that it overflowed in forty-two, but nobody can confirm it. On our Opine side of the family, that land in that area was settled in the late eighteen hundreds, and it's never, ever been like this. And none of our ancestors remember it in forty-two going west. There are a couple of people that claim it has, but with roads and silting in and things that have changed, I don't know if those paths would go on their own without, you know, connecting a few dots and creating that path. And that's the questions, I guess, that we're raising. And I know it would cost money, but it also could ultimately save some, a lot of grief, I guess, as far as roads going under. And this constant trying to figure out these road paths is expensive for the county. I understand. And so I think if we can get that created, I think we could, you know, alleviate a lot of issues.
But I guess I'm just gonna throw something out there. And I know what's going on, and I can see it, I'm not blind. But one of the other issues is, that ain't the only place where the problem is at, you know? The problem you guys got. I mean, there's other areas that are flooded too. I mean, so to go and dig them spots out, I really couldn't even imagine what that would cost to try to get the water to go to flow.
Really? And, you know, through the topography map, I don't know if there's ways to connect the existing potholes, if you can create that channel. If you just let it go, there's gonna be a lot of acres go under, you know, to the west and the north, to the south, you pick a direction. They're all gonna be continued, right? It'll maybe find its way on its own, but there'll be more farms that'll go under probably in the process. That's kinda where the question lies.
Can you see this? This is, uh, the grade raise is proposed. We've got, we assign the project number D three WM. That's in the area. I believe this is section six, that's section seven. Ownership Geece's, ownership Moser's. There's, I, I think there's a little confusion. Would you get copies of that proposed grade profile thing? The bottom dotted line is information based on our survey. That is the profile of the roadway that's underwater. Uh, the next dotted line above it is the ice elevation. Uh, the solid line above that is the proposed grade elevation after it's completed and brought out of water. I, I think there's, there's a little bit of confusion to the fact that, that, uh, we are raising the grade and causing a dam. Uh, there is an equalizer pipe in the bed of that road that maintains water levels evenly on both sides of the road. That's flooded. Uh, we did find it with the metal detector the other day, so we, we know it's there. And, uh, if we do a grade raise.
Grade raise?
A grade raise, uh, after the fact, we ensure that that, if, if any slop occurs over it and plugs it, it's our obligation to ensure that that thing flows and maintains water levels evenly on both sides. So, on the, on the, the engineering side, you might be looking, looking at it as a dam and a blockage for waters. But merely if that over, uh, equalizer pipe is functional, uh, it's gonna evenly raise the lake on both sides. I'm of the opinion, at this stage of the game, that that lake level, pond elevation right now is at its peak level. Uh, I'm pretty confident that, uh, if we get a three-inch rainfall event, as it exists today without a grade raise, it's naturally gonna dump itself onto, uh, to Geece's property. If that happens, we have nothing to do with it. Mother Nature did it. Uh, there was, there was talk about, uh, putting a culvert in the Blue Blanket Road. Uh, I'm not supporting, uh, putting a mechanic, by mechanical means, taking that water body and dumping it on, uh, Emily Sticklemeyer's property, uh, Brink's property, uh, and putting it in Blue Blanket Lake. I'm looking at that as, that's mechanical mechanism which inevitably would cause a lawsuit with anybody in Blue Blanket Lake. The water's gonna get there if it overtops the topography on the Geece's side. And I'm not saying, I don't wanna be the one that causes the litigation, uh, to Walworth County because I just randomly went out and opened the grade up. Dennis, do you feel like coming, or do you wanna stay silent?
Well, Gary, Gary asked me to come because of the potential wetland issues, and if, well, the crime said, the road should not impede water flow. The natural water course is fine, I mean, so, um, if there's an equalizer pipe, culvert, whatever you wanna call it, on Southwest's, you put one in on the Blue Blanket Road, or whatever I call that thing. There's no issues as far as, as I'm concerned with, no, as far as the wetlands, because what we're looking at is, as far as drainage issues, if you drain something for crop production. If you drain something, crop production, you could potentially lose USDA benefits. You got any other, you know, I don't know what else to say, but.
With your proposed graze rate, with your proposing raising the Blue Blanket Road, you would be raising that road as well, along with that east-west road?
It's not considered in D three WM.
So there wouldn't be any additional height to that?
Not yet. Uh, I, I figured, I've been thinking about this for a long time. We've got like three options. Uh, we can say, or I, we can say there, there's a possibility of a lawsuit all the way around. Uh, so do we sit back and do nothing? Uh, that's the most reasonable, inexpensive means, is do nothing. Uh, it's gonna impact people that wanna use it. Charlie Solverson, uh, we did a grade raise here along with Campbell County. Charlie had to put a mailbox up by Larry Thompson's just to get mail service. And the Campbell County road is minimum maintenance. And, uh, so those are the factors that myself, as a, as a public official, you look at the whole, the whole scenario. Uh, egg producers, uh, we'll feel free to speak, but, uh, uh, egg producers to get to that region go to Bethany Church Road now, which would be twelve, fourteen miles around. Uh, that's the stuff that it's my job to ensure that everybody is provided. Uh, option number one, do nothing. Uh, the water is right up to the edge of the Blue Blanket Road where we haven't recognized that a culvert exists. If we get a three-inch rainfall event, uh, when the ground's froze, it goes over the road and it could wash the road out and the whole pond is drained. Uh, then what? Do we, do we look at it as, as a temporary relief? Now the pond's gotta fill back up again before we have to worry about public access. Uh, another option there that washes out, can we put a culvert in? And continually drain the pond? Uh, I'm not really in favor of draining the pond. I had heard comments that, uh, we could strategically put a culvert in the Blue Blanket Road, north and south, at an elevation that just brings the road out of water. Uh, act, public access is attained by that. Uh, and it will never get that high again. Because that pipe across Blue Blanket is now controlling the pond elevation. With the possibility of litigation, uh, and the state's attorney not here, but, uh, there is, uh, there's a vested drainage rates, uh, recorded on, on one of the properties. Uh, when I asked, uh, what are vested drainage rates? Uh, a likelihood that, uh, that maybe, speculating, that there wasn't a culvert put in Blue Blanket Road in lieu of vested drainage rights. So, I, I don't wanna talk anymore about that, because if it goes to litigation, uh, that would be a key factor in, in the litigation. So it's, it's a no-win situation for me, and I called this informational meeting to get input from you guys. And, uh, there's nothing gonna happen to that unless everybody's on board with it, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask, just give me your question. So the natural flow of that slough, if Blue Blanket, the Norris Altro, were not there, is to the south and east? Is it not? Yes, absolutely. So you are not swamp busting, and that's what they call it with the nineteen eighty-five farm bill, is swamp busting. You cannot drain the slough, but you can take it, if there's something unnaturally impeding the flow, fence lines, dirt buildup, you can clean it down to the original level. That lets you take that, put that culvert in down to the original level. You don't have to drain the slough, but you can take it down, either you can take it down two or three feet, two feet, wouldn't you? Or not?
By the profile, we need to go two feet, just to pick up enough water to drain the road. The profile.
Boy, would, if you put a culvert, if you put a, a pipe in, now it wouldn't even drain it?
Sure.
To, to bring the road out of water. Based on the profile. Uh, we've gotta drain, I, I don't know, it's, it's two feet, the deepest part there.
But I mean, would, I guess my question, Gary, is, would you below, would that be below the natural level? Say the roadbed were not there, what would, if the road was not there, how much would that take that?
I would speculate it would be a, a foot above the natural level of the ditch on the east side.
So it would, it would open that road up?
It would drain, just about drain the entire pond.
No, it won't.
But it would do enough good if it were that good, would it do enough good?
Yes, it would.
Take it back to probably like it was a few years back when it, you know, when was that? Six, eight years ago when it was full again? You could probably take it back to that, I, I would think.
This is down Blue Blanket, this is full.
Okay.
This is my blessing.
Where would that pond will drain to?
What I'm saying is, Gary, you're not gonna get sued if you don't take it past its natural level, that's all I'm saying. And maybe it needs to be both. Maybe it needs to be that culvert, maybe it does need roadwork too, both, I don't know. I'm just asking. I'm just asking.
I'm looking for that person that can say, Gary, you can put a pipe in, you'll get sued.
Yeah, like you said, the vested drainage rights, they were, let's go back to the nineteen eighty-five farm bill, December sometime, nineteen eighty-five. Mossad swamp busting provisions which were included in the farm bill. At that time, the people that had drained wetlands prior to that time had the option to come to the NRCS office, tell us when, where they're at, when they were constructed, and then they were vested or they were recorded as registered to deeds. You can go in there anytime you want and maintain those.
Yes, the individual.
Right.
Read the, the permitting.
Exactly, the landowner.
So if, if that's the case, no.
But that's two different.
You know the question I wanna ask, which I can't ask with the fear of litigation.
That's actually where they physically drain the slough. And if it's been done before eighty-five, you can maintain it as best. That's totally different than kicking something at its natural level. Two different things. It's two different things.
I have one question. How did Camp County drain Salt Lake and not get sued? That all ran through all ours, again?
That's a whole different can of worms that, we'll talk to Game Fisher Partners about. We don't have jurisdiction on those.
So I mean, they, but they did it somehow.
I, I agree, I don't know how to get it.
The rumors were it was getting into Brandon and Rowan's shops and stuff. Well, Tom's sitting right here. His dad lost their basement, their basi, Tom's basement's in trouble. I mean, it's getting into their houses. That's no different than a shop. I don't know. I mean, I just wish we could get it down somewhat, 'cause we keep, we're losing, our bull pasture's underwater. And it's, it's, we've lost half of our feedlot. It just keeps coming up. We can't use our well.
Now, see, since you're talking Blue Blanket and, and this is the slough by Ross Moser's. We're wanting to be talking about it, uh, and I don't know if I wanna confuse this easily, but. We did, uh, in-house on the Blue Blanket grade. Uh, we, when we were doing this centerline profile in-house to come up with that proposed grade raise thing, we, I think we did three holes in the Blue Blanket Road. The average depth of water over the road is twenty-seven inches. Uh, I did have the DOT engineering, uh, side come in and give me a specific lake elevation. For instance, seventeen hundred point sixty-seven. Uh, that was taken off the ice elevation of Blue Blanket. Prior to this, we set up our own benchmarks, uh, where we can, we set them up toward the end of December. And we set them up with the intent that now we've got a, a physical monument that, uh, we just did it a couple of weeks ago. We go back in and now we can consciously recognize is Blue Blanket Lake on the rise. Is it stable or is it on the decline? Uh, Blue Blanket Lake appears to be on the, it's not moving. Uh, the Groob Lake, I call it Groob Lake, uh, that's, it's flooded east of the Groob Lake. And the big massive, uh, lake west of Groobs, uh, we did a couple of holes on the Groob Lake and the average depth was fifty-one inches. And the Groob Lake is, is on an incline, on an increase, uh, thirty-six hundredths of a foot over the course of two months. And that's evidenced with some drainage coming in, uh, to the north, from the north. Uh, that one and the Blue Blanket Lake are probably gonna be flooded for a long time. The, the short segment, uh, north of your place west, up to the county line, uh, the water depth was thirty inches on that. So, we're kind of, we're in a situation where it isn't feasible to do a grade raise on Blue Blanket. It's not feasible to do any grade raises on water depths that, uh, D three WM is, is an estimated eight inches uniformly, uh, based on the profile. Eight inches is doable to provide access. But I don't wanna get involved in, in doing something that number one, isn't ethically right. Uh, Leo, if you wanna sign an affidavit that says you can put a culvert in there without no questions, ensure that the county doesn't get sued by placing water across other private properties that normally.
First of all, you have eminent domain. Secondly, it's an unnatural elevation there. They probably should've had a culvert put in there, keep that water level down. I mean, without that road ever having been built, water would flow across there naturally. And I mean, if that's the case, you don't go below that point, I don't see what you have a problem. I mean, it'd be cheaper for the county too, obviously. And maybe you still need to raise that order, improve that road, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just trying to help you with options. Like I said, I've offered Gary dirt, if he needs fill, so, whatever, whatever is best, he knows.
Just one, one second, Mary. And, uh, the outcome of this meeting, I don't know if I've said it already, but, uh, uh, I would be recommending to the commission that, uh, at this stage of the game, uh, we hire a consulting firm to come in and do hydrology studies. Would the public support that? Uh, that would indicate, uh, if the grade raise is done, uh, the hydrology study would say you're gonna see a, a quarter of an inch increase in the pond elevation with the proposed grade raise. That still doesn't mean that we do it. Uh, it means we spend, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speculate. I asked one of the engineering firms to provide me an estimate for hydrology study. Uh, it wasn't enough time.
What's the cost in for it, uh, Nick Inwood, that study? I mean, basically the same thing.
On a smaller scale.
Yeah, I'm sure you're gonna be talking five, ten thousand.
Surely five. Would that study also include if there was a culvert in here and culvert in different places for natural flow? Would that be part of the study?
Yeah.
Was there not a letter right away about if there would be something for the mass of Blue Blanket that the fear of litigation wouldn't be there? Was that not one of the letters read right away? That if we can resolve the main problem with Blue Blanket, there'd be no problem with a culvert to drain this small body of water?
In my opinion, that wasn't part of the conversation you read. That was simply the proposed grade raise.
But I mean, that's, it seems like to me that the, the bigger issue is the Blue Blanket and the mass of the lake there. 'Cause if we, 'cause if that lake, if there's a result there and we can get that bigger lake dealt with, I think there would be no issue with people having this smaller puddle drained into that. But there wouldn't be people wanting to drain it into there now for fear of raising it, because I mean, we. to drain it into there now for fear of raising it, because I mean, we currently take a road that's only about six to eight inches above the ice right now, and as Geesees are in the same boat, their road's only just a few inches above it, so I think they're worried about the excess traffic, if that road does get open, what happens when they start fine in the spring?
Yeah, always getting to open.
So if something can get dealt with Blue Blanket, so where we don't have the issue of these roads going under, I think then we can get to, alright, well, let's drain this smaller puddle then, so that we don't have to worry about our roads going under.
Yeah, because the, the road that you referred to, that the egg people have to use now is the Bethany Church Road, that one's at a solid, what, probably six inches over the water right now, so that road is in jeopardy, the county line's in jeopardy, the road by Geesees is in jeopardy, and so consequently, any water added to it is going to exacerbate the problem of all of these other roads, and so, it's kind of, it's all linked together, then you have to deal with one to deal with the other.
Am I wrong Gary, the road easiest, with the least amount of raising to raise it would be by, by Geesees?
The road what?
The road, but west of Geesees would be the simplest to raise.
We've done it two, maybe three times.
But it's not a big area.
It's not a big area.
That's my point.
Yes.
So if that road by Wes's was drained down to the natural level, and you, you could, because I don't have access into there, except by Zane's, and then I farm three miles northeast of there, it's fifteen and a half miles around, um, I'm being selfish, you guys understand it, but I'm just telling you my part, and I'm just looking at the whole picture as far as that road, I know Blue Blanket's a whole nother, whole nother deal, I mean, it's not a lot of water going to affect you, but it's still a big deal, don't get me wrong, I fully understand that. The, 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 we're talking about this road right now, and I don't think draining that, it's like a thimble into a, into the Wahi Reservoir really, it's not, you know, you take it down TB, that's nothing, it's not like they're draining a hundred of those in there, you know? But, I think if you ever, if it does keep coming up, by Zane's is where it's the easiest place to raise it, and if Wes's road is out, then everybody's got access through there. That's just my thinking, looking at it, for my, that's, that's me, I might be wrong, I'm looking for the easiest for the county and the cheapest for the county, that's all I'm looking at.
Question for you Gary, I'm at the road that you're talking about, do the grade raise on, that pond that we're looking, we're not really looking at draining that, you're looking at raising it, isn't there a culvert under that road right now, is an equalizing culvert?
Across here.
Yeah.
North and south.
So by raising that grade, where are we pushing the water?
We're displacing.
Where, where are you displacing it to?
The same, the, the same retention body.
Yeah, it's going to be in the same body, I don't see where by raising that grade is changing anything as far as Blue Blanket goes, or anything else, other than that pond.
It isn't going to, because eventually it's going to run over.
Right.
If we say, what if we drive for two years, it's all going to get an issue, but it is a big, now I realize.
But that's really what, what our issue, we're even talking about today, is just that road, basically. Can I say something now? It's my turn. Yep. Now, if it's okay for that pond to fill up some more, and naturally drains to the east over that Simka Road, and all of a sudden that becomes okay, because it drained over the road, there's already a natural flow there that was disrupted, that needs to be fixed, and all that would take is that culvert in that Simka Road, take that pothole down, it'll never drain it empty, it'll drain fifty percent of it out to expose the road, to make that accessible, all you need is a few loads of gravel to shore that road up since it's been underwater, and you're done, you're good to go, it can't get simpler than that. That map I gave you up there, you all need to look at that.
If I, if I understand you, Ray, Wes, and what, what the Commissioner Hogard was saying, you're saying take a culvert to the east of that pond?
In the southeast corner, or southwest corner, from Emily Steckelmeyer's, across the road to the east, that is part of the pothole that's on my side of the road that was disrupted years ago when they put Simka Road in. So, by putting that culvert in, it would run through that pothole on her side, and follow that, that drainage area that you see going southeast there in the Blue Blanket.
Okay Wes, it's, to the west, or to the east of that, is there actually a culvert that goes in that drainage, north and south, across that road?
There is no culvert.
That's what I was going to Gary stop.
That was neglected years ago when they put the road in.
That's plugged up.
Wes, there's a concrete culvert there, Gary, nobody knows where that is.
I've never seen one, I've moved those ditches since I've been there, I've never seen a culvert. It's, it's natural flow, we aren't displacing.
But this is one, it's a grain, not water. And this is, this is the same, this is the culvert here, and there's a natural section back to that, we don't have to raise this.
This is the culvert body water, it is just about to go over Blue Blanket Road, if it flows over, it's not our fault. The engineers, uh, thought, because look at it, I can't say, I've never seen a hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons of water being displaced, and what displaced means the culvert's cleared up, and is, and it's going to raise the body, but it's.
To the east, and then to suck the spurs to the, yeah.
I, I think, what's been.
What's part of that, I mean, they need to, there's plenty of drainage. I'm believing the spurs are what they're drawing.
Wes, do you have a question? Do you have any more to talk about on that? Well, I don't want to, but I just want to know that you understand what I'm saying here. Right here. If that's draining, it comes over here. This is, this is natural flow here, the elevation there is going to allow it to take right off once it crosses under the road.
Comments done?
Just one other thing, if, if you do put the culvert in, so drains, the natural drain heads out to the southeast, the way I understand it, there's a fence line between Emily's and Brink property?
Suction line.
Suction line, if that is silted in along the fence line, that material can be moved out too, so, help it pe, you know, speed up the flow, that's no issue either as far as NRCS, USDA is concerned.
You don't have any trouble Gary? Because it's a natural drain, at the natural level.
Until the letter comes from the attorney. I propose the grade raise, that's my proposal, these guys delegate, uh, the process we go through, uh, I, I want to recommend to the commission that let's do a, a hydrology study on behalf of Walworth County, and the, the possibility of litigation, it's, it's in the letters, that if you do the grade raise, we're going to court, uh, so the federal litigation is there. I'd say, let's bring an engineering firm in and do a hydrology study, and, uh, results come out, I'd rather not revisit this again, but, uh, you guys agree?
He asked for, for the jury for next, next meeting to prove that.
One question, um, you're, you, you think that there, is there a greater chance of litigation with the grade raise, or a greater chance of litigation with opening of the natural hole? I'm just, I don't know, I'm asking, what'd be your opinion?
The grade raise. But.
And from a cost standpoint, the grade raise?
If, uh, if the material, if the material comes from the North County pit, uh, I don't think it's in the packet you guys got, but it, eighteen thousand, and that is hauled in during frozen road conditions, stockpiling the Blue Blanket Road since it's closed, uh, it's there for pickup again, as soon as the ice out occurs, or we're not destroying a bunch of roads, bringing material in during thaw, uh, eighteen thousand bucks, uh, if it comes from Charlie Salverson's donation, uh, what is that, what's, two miles north? A mile and a quarter north, uh, I can't remember what you got in your packet, right?
Fourteen or forty-one.
Yeah, fourteen, if it goes direct, like based on your, uh, your donation, uh, if it comes direct from field to project, well less than that.
I have a question, you said you're stockpiling on the Blue Blanket Road, I read something like eighty-four loads?
That was, that was the original intent, merely to have a place to put it, so we could haul it during frozen weather conditions, so.
But you're not going to start, if it does, if you do do something with that road, you won't start working on it until it thawed?
The stockpile material would come in when it's frozen and stockpiled.
Yep.
On the road top.
Yep.
And, uh, you, we don't, uh, you don't put field material on frozen.
Frozen ground, yeah.
Frozen ground, so it sits there until the ice out occurs, and then you go across the hole.
Okay, so if a person needs to get in there during spring work, get down that road to access the other half of that section, or if they have land down there, and that dirt is on that road, how would a person?
I, I don't want to be a wise guy, but you can't get there now, the road's froze, if the road's flooded, so if you're coming from your house, you can't get to the stockpile because.
No, you'd have to go around.
Yeah, you'd have to go all the way around.
And I tried to do that. So, I just was wondering if a person needed to get down that road, they couldn't because you stopped playing with the dirt on it.
Gary, with the hydrology study, could we incorporate Blue Blanket Lake in that too to see what can be done about possibly lowering that? As, as a citizen of Glutton, South Dakota, with my sump pump running year round, I'd be one of the first ones saying, I don't want that water. Dennis, let me ask you, is there a problem of lowering Blue Blanket?
That's a whole nother can of worms.
That's a monumental.
Yeah. Is it waiting for us to get our taxes lowered then, or something?
Yeah.
You know, if you're doing something like that, you're going to get the Corps of Engineers, a lot more government entities involved than.
Private easements, and, uh, if it's going to flood any, if it's going to increase the pond elevations of any sloughs down gradient from Blue Blanket, uh, there's loss of egg production, and, uh, that's crazy.
Anybody else have any questions, concerns about it?
What does a guy do to, 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 to tax it?
Because of loss of land?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you have to reevaluate or something.
I mean, we're paying.
You have time to think about it?
And she drank us, with her.
I would guess you would, you'd try to lower Blue Blanket, you would, it would involve a lot of people.
Just, uh, one comment that I, I did get from the, it's the regional NRCS in Huron, I believe Dennis.
What's that, sorry Gary?
The regional NRCS office is in, in Huron.
Our state office is.
State office, I did get, uh, a whole lot of, uh, topography, colored topography maps, I glued them all together, and, uh, just for your, for your knowledge, Sand Lake, I, I want to say that the surface elevation of Sand Lake is nineteen eighty-two, uh, Blue Blanket Lake elevation is seventeen point sixty-seven, uh, so that means Sand Lake is lower than Blue Blanket, but there's a big hill mass by Lonny Gustafson's that, uh, in my opinion, Blue Blanket, uh, at seventeen point eighty-six, I, I'm just trying to remember numbers, uh, is going to have to get to an elevation of, uh, seventeen oh five to seventeen ten to get to Mike Slumers, so we're talking a mass of monod water, and I hope that we're seeing the historic high. Zane, uh, your first name, right?
Yep.
And I don't know if Emily's represented here?
I tried calling you, you called me.
If we drew a hydrology study, I need permission to have an engineer go on your property to, uh, outline the boundaries of the lake and shoot some surface elevations.
You can do that.
And the same way with, uh, in Wes, uh, if we go through a hydrology study, uh, they need to physically outline the boundaries, uh, they need to do elevation readings, and same way with Brink's, uh, Brian, you still here? Yeah. We did a, we did a survey on the, the Emily Steckelmeyer side, and we're talking, uh, generic eyeglass ground rod, uh, I felt that, uh, water on the east side that would go across Emily's will naturally drain, with exception to a little ponding that occurs that doesn't drain pre-culvert placement.
Anybody else have anything? No? Thank you. Alright Gary, you going to pull on?
Uh, last meeting, there was a little bit of discussion about whether the joint ownership agreement was approved, I'm assuming that it was, and the, the agreement's been signed there, that's all we need to do there, we opened the bid for the snowblower, uh, motion to, I need a motion to, uh, approve a resolution to set the weight limits in Walworth County?
I'll take a motion for that. Okay, I've motion on the floor, I need a second. Resolution WC two zero two zero oh five. Resolution WC two zero two zero oh five, a resolution to set overweight limits. Ultimate responsibility for the county roads in Walworth County rests with the Walworth County Commission. The Walworth County Commission has appointed the Highway Superintendent as a proper highway authority responsible for the care and maintenance of all Walworth County roads. To preserve the roads in Walworth County during all seasons of, of the year, weight restrictions must be imposed and enforced. To preserve the roads in Walworth County during the spring season, weight restrictions and/or reduced speeds must be imposed. Be beneficial to Walworth County to seek and obtain assistance of South Dakota Highway Patrol in enforcing load restrictions on all Walworth County roads. Walworth County Board of Commissioners hereby authorize the Walworth County Highway Superintendent to oppose, consistent with the recommendations, the South Dakota Department of Transportation and the South Dakota Highway Patrol. Weight restrictions for overall vehicle weight and/or weight restrictions per axle during all seasons of the year and to also include reduced weight limits due to thawing and excessive moisture during the spring season. In so resolving, the Commission directs the Highway Superintendent to post notice on weight restrictions as required by law. The Walworth County Board of Commissioner requests assistance from the South Dakota Highway Patrol in the enforcement of weight restrictions in Walworth County. It authorizes the Walworth County Highway Superintendent to work in conjunction with the South Dakota Highway Patrol to reduce damage to the roads in Walworth County to overweight vehicles dated this twentieth day of February two thousand twenty, South Dakota. Okay, I've got a motion on the floor. I need a second. You got a second? Any more discussion?
When are you thinking of putting the road limits on, Gary?
I, I'm gonna guess a couple of weeks. I think there's a statutory guideline where, where you can't put them on prior to this date, whatever that date is. And a statute that says they can only stay on for so long unless there's a, a resolution from the Commission to extend it. So I, I need to look at those numbers in the, in the statutes and go from there, so...
It won't be made, though.
Not today.
Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
Like to have a motion to purchase culverts for two thousand twenty by joint power agreement with TruNorth Steel of Huron, South Dakota off of Beetle County bid.
Okay, I'll need a motion for that. Aye, so... Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second. One second. You got a second? Any more discussion?
I'm leaning, I'm looking at my...
Uh, our inventory is good. That's just a formality that in, in the event we run out of inventory. Those, uh, you guys never did get my project thing that I had on the agenda last meeting. But if we need to buy a big culvert, for instance, that Manki Bridge project, uh, that will be off that bid. And, uh, we need to do some culvert replacements. Cemetery, south of town, all the way west out where that, those culverts rusted out. And I think there was a temporary addition. I don't know when that was done, but, uh, that's the the technicality here that...
Anything else? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed.
You got the January budget balance review? You got any questions? We can go over it. If you don't have any questions, that's just for you. You'll... It's your copy? With that, I don't have anymore.
Anybody have anything for Gary? Thanks, Gary.
You want a motion to bring in a consulting engineer?
No.
For hydrology?
Do you need a motion for that as long as you're allowing him to do it?
He's not sitting here to ask it.
Gary, do you know if you, I mean, based on your experience, would you have to have a motion to do that? If you have any problem? If you're gonna try to do a grade raise or whatever?
I know we did that hyr, that study there with, joint there with Cal County. Possibly get a motion there.
But, yeah, I don't know.
Well, here, put this way. Jamie didn't show up. We'll ask him. If he doesn't, we'll still ask him if, if we have to have a motion for it. It was put on the agenda for next meeting.
Because we have to have a motion for it, we can't even vote on it today anymore because it's not on the agenda.
Based on the outcome of the informational meeting, Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm gonna hire an engineering firm to come in and do hydrology study for D three WM with a not-to-exceed limit of X.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to the number twenty-one, uh, consider motion to approve budget supplement. Notice hereby given that the Board of County Commissioners in and for the county of Walworth and the city of Selby, South Dakota on the twentieth day of February two thousand twenty at the hour of ten fifteen at the Walworth County Corrus and the County Commissioners Chambers will be, will meet in regular session to conduct a public hearing regarding the supplement two thousand twenty Walworth County budget as per SDCL seven dash twenty-one dash twenty-two. This is pro sup, sup, supplement in the amount of eighty-four thousand seven hundred twenty dollars needed to cover budget for expenditures originally designated out of the general fund appropriations. Two two six dash zero dash one oh one Emergency Management Fund, eighty-four thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. Source funding one oh one dash zero dash one oh one, General Fund, eighty-four thousand seven hundred. Notice here, further given that any person, persons or their representatives who are interested in approval or rejection of any such supplement may appear and be heard at said public hearing dated Selby, South Dakota, the thirty-first day of January two thousand twenty. Motion for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
What is the eighty-four, you said eighty-four thousand seven hundred?
Seven hundred twenty.
What is that for? For the Emergency Management Fund. Why is that being put in there? Because legislature had told us we have to.
Okay, you got a motion on the floor. I need a second. You got a second? Any more discussion on that? Hear none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. Motion passed. Okay, we'll go number twenty-five, discussion regarding the Donald and Matthew Gintz property. Did you put that on it, Jim?
Yeah, we got this last meeting from, and we, in that conundrum. Well, we talked about it. Jamie explained that to us about, uh, giving that quiet title.
Right.
And the statute says we may, he may do that, not that he must. And Mr. Johnson is asking us to direct him to do it. And I think we should be on, on record stating we don't wanna open that can of worms, so I would, I would, uh, make a motion. We do not direct our state's attorney to do a quiet title on, on this property.
Because there's quite a few properties that have been going back on.
Oh, my goodness. We'd have to hire a couple more state's attorneys.
I just have some information on this situation. Before the person purchased the property, they were told numerous, numerous times about the liens on the property and still decided to purchase the property without a title search, so they were, they were not able to remain in my, my office, by the assessor's office, so they knew.
Yeah. And Jamie, and Jamie explained that to us too. They knew about it when they bought it. And I just think we should go on record.
Are you making a motion for Blanket for all properties?
All properties are not here.
It's not necessary.
I, I was thinking this one for now, and if we wanna make a proposal we should, the future. I just thought we should have it on record that we are not going to direct him to do this rather than just let it fall by the wayside. Or he only send another letter saying we didn't act on it. Are we gonna vote on that or?
Yes.
Do you want a motion?
We could just agree.
I think it's more of a public information, wasn't it? I mean, we don't need a, so it's on public record if we're not...
Okay, yep. Sounds good.
Do you have your, your landfill report? So on the accounts receivable, after the last meeting, I did receive a check from standing here after that day and they are no longer past ninety days past due. We have another hauler that is and I will receive their check before they dump again, which they don't dump until Mondays. There was, Connect Carpentry did pay off their balance dues that was due since two thousand seventeen. However, they only paid the amount due and they did not pay the interest of a dollar twenty-four. And there was another one that had thirty twenty-eight cents interest. They did not pay it either. Do you want me to continue billing them for this interest? Because the stamp and everything else was probably classified. But I want you guys to make that a decision so that the board decides it is not myself.
What's, what's the commission wanna do with that? I agree. By the time you go after and try to collect the interest, you're gonna pay more than just supposed to decide on bill.
I mean, the, the one won't have any future bills. The other one, they will, so I can leave the twenty-eight cents on there and add it to their next invoice. But the other one is no longer able to dump out of the landfill because theirs was from two thousand seventeen. So do you want just the one?
I would guess if, if the other one's for the dollar twenty-eight or whatever, then dollar twenty-four. If they do come back and dump it.
They're, they, they can't. They're not allowed.
Yeah, you're right. Until they occur, they don't occur until they're...
Well, no, they were canceled as an account and I don't even think they're in business no longer. I don't think so. A lot of times when they cancel an account, the way I, I've looked at it, we don't give them another help after they're officially canceled for non-payment for three years. So therefore their cash base is after that. So even if they did come out to dump, they would charge and write that on the bill.
I, I guess I agree. Let's write them two off for now.
Well, I, I mean, like I said, this other one, this twenty-eight cent one, it was MDU. They'll be back, so I can keep that on their bill. But...
But technically, the way our, the way our motion is ready in July, if they are over ninety days, they can't dump period until they're current.
But they aren't. MDU's not. This is just a twenty-eight cents they get charged right here. That's current. Because they have it.
I see. Yeah, yeah, I was looking at your own column. Yeah.
So we only have the, the one hauler that's over ninety days right now. There's a, there's a business in Mulbridge. I'm not sure why. River Ridge, I've been working with, because they were having some issues with mailing out their checks. Pops are still over ninety days. A First Choice Custom Flooring doesn't live around here anymore, so... And the, the hauler that's cut off will be out of their ninety days before they dump again. And they'll be dumping once, when it's on Mondays.
Then you say you'll get a check from them Monday?
Before.
And they'll be under ninety days, right?
Yep.
I guess I can support that and then go with our, our original motion after that from now on.
So I would like you guys to make a motion to write off the dollar twenty-four on Connect Carpentry. I mean, I don't know if, like, you can actually do that at this meeting. So I'll just put it on the next agenda. And then, yeah, we got what they owed. We just didn't get the interest. So I'll add it to the next agenda so that you can make an official motion on that, so that's...
Anything else?
Anybody else have anything?
Anybody else have anything for the landfill? All right, we'll move on. Limit.
I guess I have a few questions. I wasn't at the last meeting, but I watched the video. And after watching that, I went back and watched the video from the meeting on July third and the motion that were made. There's discrepancy in the minutes and the video. And I guess I'd like the board to address that. The first motion that was made by how he made a motion to charge interest on all past due accounts and anything over ninety days be cut off. And then when they are current, be a cash basis only. And that is not how it reads in the minutes. His second motion he made, the interest rate on dilapidated accounts over thirty days will be one and a half percent per month, eighteen percent per annum. Goes into effect October first, two thousand nineteen. Cash pay and other cutoffs will go into effect October first, two thousand nineteen. That was the motion. And that is, and not in the minutes either. And I tried to get a copy of the handwritten minutes and they are not available to the public, according to the auditor. So I wasn't able to confirm that they were actually in the handwritten minutes, but if you watch the video, they were written on the minutes, so I believe there needs to be a correction to the minutes. The minutes are supposed to be mirrored to the video. I mean, there is an official video of every commission meeting. So how would the board like to address this?
I was absent from that meeting. I can go back and review the video and look at what minutes were written. And we'll, we'll, I will look into it.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah. So did you even go back to look at the minutes, the handwritten minutes when I requested them? Did you even see if they were there?
The, the handwritten minutes are just, they don't, they don't even have to be written down. They're just like a scratch paper for the person who's going to write the minutes. So I don't, I don't understand what your thoughts are on that being a public record. It's, Jamie's scribbling on his agenda, does that make it a public record?
Well, he's just data for me and I don't believe I can get information from him.
It's, it's scratch paper. That's all these are. The official public record is the minutes that are written and approved.
Okay. Well, if you, when you do go back and look at those minutes, I realize you worked at the meeting, but the person that was at the meeting was writing down minutes? Did you check out the, the agenda from that meeting?
Those minutes that we had for that meeting on the.
July 2nd, I'm sorry, I said the 3rd, it was July 2nd.
Yeah, they were approved at the following meeting. So those are the minutes that we have.
So if, if you're saying those are the official minutes from the meeting, you have several items on that agenda that are not in those official minutes. Motions that were made and passed. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Items that are on the agenda that were done at the meeting that are not in the official minutes. I realize you approved them at the meeting, but they were not done at the meeting. There are so many things that are left out and they have to correspond, mirror the image. I got that from legislative audit. I'm not just saying that as a taxpayer. I went and got the information before I came here today.
We'll check into it.
May I approach the board?
Yes.
Let me look at the jail, the sheriff's report. This is all that's in the official minutes. And all of this stuff happened.
We'll have to check into it. I don't know how you go back and correct the past approved minutes. Get some back and redo correction and change.
Correct.
I'm just looking. Anything else?
Yeah, I guess my other question was, it was stated several times at that meeting that a letter be sent to the haulers about what was happening, about the changes, that there'd be interest, they'd be cut off after 90 days. So I was questioning whether the board ever directed the landfill supervisor to do that.
As far as I know, they should, they were called, I would recall about it.
Okay. I was just wondering, because you had stated several times, several commissioners, that they would be sending a letter to the haulers and I just wanted to know if you had informed the landfill supervisor to do that.
She called them all.
Okay, did you inform her to send a letter? It's what I'm asking the commission board. If you didn't, that's fine, I'm just asking the question.
As far as I know, I don't ever recall that we were supposed to send a letter to them.
It was stated at the meeting that you were going to have in Senate and I was just questioning whether you, whether you had informed the landfill supervisor to do that.
My heart implies that it was just to call them. You just called and informed them.
Okay. And what are the hours at the landfill?
The hours at the landfill are Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30.
And they're not open on Saturday?
Not at this time of the year.
Okay, so why is the landfill open on a Saturday? The gate is open?
If there's special circumstances, we are be allowed, we are allowed to be open.
So have you had special circumstances?
Yes, we have.
And what?
There's some things that need to be done out there. If Gary needs to go do something at the highway department when it's not regular business hours, that he goes.
So when, when Gary goes out there, the gate is open and it's open for anybody to go in?
Is, is this really, I guess, if he chooses to leave it open?
Okay, well, there's been a couple instances where the gate has been left open on a Saturday all day and into the evening, nighttime, and I'm just questioning why it was left open if the hours do not include Saturday.
It's, it's not left open and unattended. There is someone at the landfill at the time.
At 10 o'clock at night?
Yes.
So there, and if there's work being done by one of the pieces of equipment out there on a Saturday, is that because there wasn't enough time during the week, were you paying overtime for that?
No.
So who is doing the work on those days?
If you would like, we can visit about this, if you want to come out to the landfill and go over all this.
No, I'm asking the question.
I don't think that's what a commission meeting is for, but.
Well, I think if the landfill is open and supposed to be closed on a Saturday.
The supervisor, I can answer your questions for you, but I don't think it's part of this commission meeting.
I think the landfill is because it's part of the county.
I get that it's part of the county, but it's not on the commission agenda to discuss the landfill's hours right now. So if you'd like to address your concerns with me, I will be happy to meet with you about them.
That's what the landfill supervisor is for, is to, to do that. And if they're open on Saturday, I guess, I don't think as a commissioner, I know, I'm not going to call them and say, you can't be doing anything out there on Saturday because they have different hours. It's just like on a Tuesday in the summertime, they're open late on a, on a Tuesday. It, it's how they want to do it out there. I mean, I don't, I don't think the commission has ever set a schedule saying, you are going to be here from 4:30, from 8 o'clock till 4:30. They set their hours on, on their own.
The commission sets when the landfill is open to the public and has to be open to the public. If we have other stuff we need to do out there, any business, if they have other stuff they need to do out there or if there's special circumstances, then we're going to, we're going to do what's best for the landfill.
Okay, I was just asking why it would be open on a Saturday if it's not advertised for being open on a Saturday. Okay, my other question I have, I'm, I'm, I'm done with that and I'm allowed to ask that question.
I understand that. I, I just, I just simply stated that, you know, you can come and ask me any questions you would like and you can schedule a meeting with me out at the landfill to ask landfill questions. I don't think it needs to be done at the board meetings, simply all they stated.
Yeah, you just simply stated that it wasn't on the agenda today and I'm on the agenda as, on, for the landfill, I'd like to ask those questions. Other question is, what was the last day that Soul Brothers did the contracting work at the landfill? They were presented a check. Have they done any work since they got that check for $86,000 plus?
Yes.
Yes, they were. They worked quite a while after that.
Okay, because I thought one of the meetings that the leasing company had said that they were, they took their equipment back.
That was way after that check.
That's, that's not uncommon to pay somebody before the project is done.
No, I know it's not uncommon to pay somebody and I realize that they were entitled to their money, but in the contract it said they'd be paid at the end. And you paid them $86,000. One of the commissioners stated that it was for the equipment rental and it wasn't used for that. It was stated that it was discussed at a meeting and it was not discussed at a meeting. And if there wasn't enough money in the budget to pay for it, had it been discussed at a meeting, you probably would have known that and you wouldn't have to supplement the budget. If there wasn't enough money in the covered debt check that was written. So my question again is, why was this not discussed at the commission meeting? In the, yeah, I'll, I'll just say one more thing. In the past, when we've had contracts with different engineering companies and done work for the county, you spend in the minutes, you've made a motion to make partial payments. This one was not. So I'm just asking the question, why you didn't do it this time? You've had a precedent where you've done it before.
It's, uh, when we get our claims list, it's even on there. If, if we get a request from that company that they want money, well, they've done work. They send, what's that called, that paper?
Payment request.
Payment request. We're going to pay them.
I'm not questioning whether you pay them or I'm questioning whether, why you didn't have a discussion at the meeting to do this. Why would you put 80, I mean, I realize that there's bills that come in all the time on the claims list that you pay. This was an $86,000 bill. I mean, it wasn't like it was a couple thousand. It was $86,000. And as a commission board, as a taxpayer, I would hope that you would have a discussion on them. And as chairperson, you sat there and said that you didn't think all that work was completed.
Of course I did and I will say that right now.
Right. So why wouldn't we have a discussion as a board? Did you have a discussion outside the meeting in order to pay that $86,000? Everybody knew when you came to the meeting, that $86,000, what it was for and why you were paying it?
Well, I'm going to forget that you said that you have a meeting outside the board on that. I'll, I'll forget it this time, but don't accuse me of that ever again. I'm just going to tell you that right now.
I didn't accuse you of doing it, I asked the question.
Yeah, you did. You said to the chair.
I asked the question if the board met outside or discussed it outside. You can hammer me if you want.
Well, I'm about to. Because it's nothing that we did to pay that money. It's that simple. We paid that money.
I'm asking why was not discussed at a meeting?
Well, I wouldn't know why it wasn't, but it was paid. They requested it, so they get paid. It's on the claims list, it's technically discussed. That isn't even close to what their bid was.
That's immaterial at this point. To say it's on the claims list and it's okay that you paid it, there has to be a discussion on this. You can't just, any bills that come in to the county, you're just going to put them on the claims list and you pay them with no discussion?
Cam Wall right here. Has there been discussion about paying Cam Wall?
And how much is that bill for?
$361.49.
Right, I would say a $300 bill could be paid by the county. $86,000 is a totally different number.
We pay, we get for, for the road or highway department, we buy new blades, $275,000. Bill comes in, yep, we know about it, boom, we sign. I don't understand what you're getting at, but.
It does, like commissioner, I would hope that you would understand why I'm asking the question, why there was no discussion on this. It's an $86,000 bill and I'll say it, Mr. Holgard, you were the one that said that you had discussed it at a meeting. You did not discuss it.
Every time we did, every time we approved the claims.
That's not a discussion.
They had that money come to them.
It's not a question of whether they had the money coming to them or not. I'm asking why the board didn't do it as a board? Why you had no discussion on paying it? You've done it in the past for all other contracts that wanted partial payments. If you want, I can go back in all the minutes and bring it to the next meeting and show you all the partial payments that you put on the agenda, had a motion to pay it. I'm asking why this one was different.
There is nothing different about it.
So why didn't you put it on there? So any other bills that come in to that amount, you're not going to put, put there, you're just going to stick them in the claims list, not going to be on the agenda?
We got one right here for $103,000.
I don't know what that is, I haven't seen it. If that needed to be discussed, then I would bring it up at the next meeting because I haven't seen it.
Well, we're going to move on. Good, to me, this makes absolutely no sense.
You're spending taxpayer dollars and not making any sense? But I'm asking the question, why it wasn't put on the agenda? Why you had no discussion at a meeting about it?
We're telling you that, that bid was awarded to them. And they needed partial payment, so they received it. Yes.
Jamie, when a bid is approved by the board for a specific amount of money?
Correct.
Would that cover approving the payment aside from through the claims list?
I think what she's saying is that we've always kind of, when they come in and ask for partial payment, it's been on the agenda as partial payment. This one was paid through the claims and I think that's what her issue is. That that's not how we normally do it. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's not how you've conducted business in the past, so I'm asking why it was different this time? Is this how it's going to be done in the future? When there's bills that are just going to go in the claims list and you're going to approve them and that's your way of discussing bills?
Well, I wouldn't think that it's something that happens all the time. It's nothing that was done that was trying to be illegal about it.
I didn't say there was anything illegal about it, I'm questioning the process you used. So in the future, when bills come in for large amounts or partial payments on contracts, is this how, the process you're going to use to handle those? You're just going to put them in the claims list and said, that was our discussion on it and they're approved? Is that how you're going to handle them?
Case by case basis.
But you're not going to answer my question?
We're going to move on.
You're not going to answer my question?
I said, we're going to move on.
So you're not answering my question?
There's nothing to answer.
I asked the question, it deserves an answer.
And I gave you one.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did. I told you that we are going to, they're awarded, they've got the bid, they want a partial payment, we're going to give them a partial payment.
I asked it, that's how you're going to do business in the future for the county? If it's on the claims list, you're just going to approve it and say that was the discussion we had on it?
You see it all the time, you're watching, somebody will question something on the claims. Now, if, if people sitting here didn't question something there, they all knew what it was for. If somebody would have had a question for it, they would have asked.
As a taxpayer, I'm asking the question.
And I'm just telling you, it, it was paid.
Okay, you're not answering my question, so I guess there's no sense continuing with this discussion. Thank you.
I would take a motion to go into executive session. Okay, you got a motion on the floor, I need a second. Sorry, I have a second. Any other discussion? Here, none, all, please say aye.
Aye.
Prose say nay. Motion passed. Any hold business? New business?
Do we need to direct the auditor to run an ad in the paper and turn it in? Open positions for the upcoming election.
It's already been in there.
I didn't see it.
It was in there.
Was it?
Yeah. I have to have it published by law.
Well, I thought so, but I looked, I didn't see it. Okay, that's all I had.
I can show it to you.
Well, I can look at my paper.
I'll let you know what the paper's in.
Okay, yeah. I was just wondering, I didn't see it and I thought, I know I questioned it last, two years ago and you already run it in.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other to do business? I have a motion on the floor, I need a second. I have a second. All, please say aye.
Aye.